Interesting, you can't hold them down. Once in awhile if you move a certain way, your Patriots player comes out.
Forty-five to nothing yesterday, your worship, they can't help it.
Yeah.
I show councillor Armstrong now appearing.
Okay. Okay, hey. Okay councillor Armstrong is here, councillor Norton is here, councillor Casey is all we're looking for. Let's give another minute. Okay, perhaps common clerk Mr Evans could could just reach out in case the councillor's having a challenge?
Yes, I'll have him reach out.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well we'll call the meeting to order everyone. Thank you very much. Good evening. It is getting a little cooler. We're reminded that we're well into December now, December the 7th. And we'll call the meeting to order and welcome you and thank you for attending with us tonight. So, common clerk, first item please.
First item would be the approval of the agenda. And there is one addition proposed. It would be item seventeen-one. And that would be with respect to safe clean drinking water. And it's a recommendation from committee of the whole. And it's a session and termination agreement.
Okay, thank you. And do I have a motion to accept deputy mayor? And thank you councillor Mackenzie, thank you. Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the one addition. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay, thank you. The motion is carried. Next item, common clerk?
Disclosures of conflict of interest.
I think we missed it. Or we had no minutes to approve tonight, is that the case?
No minutes this time, your worship.
Oh, threw me off, thank you. Okay, thank you. And disclosures of conflict of interest. Okay, not seeing any hands, not hearing any voices or seeing any ear tweaks. So, no conflicts declared for tonight. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is five on the agenda and it's the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move, I'll move the consent agenda. I don't have a five point one to five point...
Five.
Five.
Yep, okay, thank you. Deputy moved and seconded by councillor Sullivan. Thank you. And any, a couple of questions maybe? Okay councillor, councillor Reardon? Councillor, did you have a question? Yep?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Five-one. This will adhere to our budget monitoring policy. Our recommendation is that we approve the general fund operating budget as presented in order to separate personnel, non-personnel costs. So, my question to finance would be if this would be what we have today. So, I'm assuming we'll be able to use this as a tool to decide whether we need more horsepower or less horsepower. A lot of, when it's broken down in the kit, you'll see that like growth would have twice as much in non-personnel cash versus personnel. So, over time, I find that, I found that unusual. But, and so would transportation, I guess, and that would reflect vehicles, et cetera. So, I guess, what's the opportunity to adjust personnel and non-personnel as we go forward? Would be my question on that one.
Thank you. Commissioner of Finance?
Yeah, three-year worship. As you recall, the budget monitoring policy was approved by council many months ago. And really the purpose of the policy is to help us meet the long-term financial plan objectives. So, we want to really increase our financial flexibility and by implementing best practice budget controls. And when we do that, we can redirect our savings into reducing the tax rate, reducing the debt, and reducing, increasing bolstering our reserves. So, with respect to the question in terms of how can we actually use this tool to help us, I guess, sculpt our budgets, a couple of ways. One, with respect to looking at the actual results, we're going to be able to see, because this budget's based on what you've already approved, the full budget, but it's just categorized differently. We're able to monitor our actual spends. And what we're hoping to see is as we see surpluses build in different budget areas, we'll be able to redirect those dollars into other, in other ways. Whether it's advancing the long-term financial plan or through the strategy, long-term strategic plan, maybe redirecting funds to different uses. So, I think it will allow us to have a whole new layer of transparency and oversight and control over the budget. And it's through that mechanism for which we'll be able to implement this budget policy and meet our financial objectives.
Okay, and like as we go forward, I mean, we won't be static, we'll be more dynamic and as things change. So, say all of a sudden, we, you know, we had this huge, or we have it happening now, this interesting growth. You may end up with needing more personnel in growth to support that growth that's happening within a city. So, I guess, you know, I guess that was part of my question is how would you monitor that as we go forward? You may need the same in non-personnel, but you might need more in personnel, so what?
Yeah, so that really is a question of your strategic plan and your, in your service outcomes. So, right now, this budget and this budget monitoring policy is overseeing the current budget and the current service levels that you have today. As you make decisions and changes in service levels or how you assign resources through strategic planning process, that's how you determine whether you want to modify where you're directing the amount of money you have for wages and benefits for growth and community development or, you know, in different service levels, in different service areas. So, it's really through that approach. The budget's the overall bucket of funds. The budget monitoring policy makes sure as we, is ensuring that we use best practices to oversee the use of those funds. But directing those funds to different service levels is really through the strategic planning process.
I think it's interesting because we'll hopefully see some of the gaps there too as we go forward, as we align what ends up at the end of the day and what we think would have happened at the beginning of the day. So, okay, that's great, thank you. The other question I have is on five-two demolition and salvage. I just want to know about salvage on five-two. Is there an opportunity with any demolition that the city does for salvage? If you live in the heritage area, you're buying bricks at probably a dollar or whatever each from someone. But, you know, you're tearing a whole building down, it's probably going to the dumps along with other maybe components. So, I'm just wondering if there is an opportunity for, for a salvage opportunity with any of that demolition?
Three-year worship to the councillor. We did raise that question to legal. And the advice that we got back was that at no point in time does the city own the building. And therefore, we can't provide permission for somebody to salvage a brick at the building. Ultimately, it's at the discretion of the owner as to whether the brick will be salvaged or not.
That's unfortunate because we have owners of these buildings that have no interest in St John or the bricks or the building, et cetera. And that's why they're being demolished. So, it would be nice if we had something, I don't know what it is, even if we encourage the demolition teams to offer salvage. And I understand that there is a lot, some liability, et cetera, with it. But, at the end of the day, to cart all that, all that off to the dump just seems crazy to me. Anyways, just thought I'd bring it up. Thanks Ben.
So, can we just build on that for a minute, building on your comment councillor Reardon? And thanks Ben for your comment. So, essentially, we don't own it, is what I think I heard you just say. But if, you know, if there were folks interested in, in some of those materials and some level of salvage, then, then I don't know through what means, but they could attempt to get in touch with the registered owner of the building and, and reach out to them to see if, if some permissions, I mean, at the end of the day, we're overseeing, if you will, the demolition, but the cost of this demolition goes to the owner ultimately. So, again, it's not, I hear the councillor's comment and concern. It would be nice to divert as much of that product as possible and reasonable from the landfill. But, but I guess if someone's out listening and they're interested in that, they really have to find the owner. I'm not even sure we can legally, unless it's on our demolition and dilapidated your report you would have given us some time ago, if the owner were listed there. It takes someone doing a little bit of homework to go and find the owner. We, we likely can't hand out the owner's name to anyone without their permission.
No, but I guess what I was also thinking was that we are going on that, we have, we're commissioning someone, allowing someone to go on that private property and take the building down. So, I didn't know if there would be any opportunity for us to encourage that or not. It's just to save things, you know, to save the landfills, et cetera, for the environment as well. And because a lot of that stuff is in fact useful to people who own similar buildings. Anyways, so that's the only reason I was asking, but thanks.
No, I'm with you councillor, sorry, and we'll move on. But I just, you know, perhaps it's something that we can bring back up at a future growth committee meeting to see if there's any mechanism for, I don't know, a standby pile off to the side. But it just has to move so quickly, right? So, but, but I think it's a good point you've raised. Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda? I don't see any hands, I don't hear anyone. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay, not hearing or seeing anyone, the motion's carried. Next item please, common clerk?
Item six, your worship, members' comments.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I didn't see any, did I see a hand councillor Sullivan? Were you? Yeah, go ahead councillor.
Thank you worship. Really all about getting us from orange to yellow and surviving orange phase. Again, just a reminder for everybody, make sure when you're out and about, you're wearing your masks. Really, once you leave your house, wear your mask. Reminder, drive-throughs, when you're walking from your car to whatever building you're headed to, please, 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 please remember to wear your mask. And not just to keep yours safe, but keep everybody around you safe. And our local businesses, especially, you know, it's Christmas time and we're in orange phase. And a lot of our restaurants are having a tough time. This is a normal time of year when there would be Christmas parties and lots of people going out. And orange phase makes it really tough. So, I guess I urge people to be creative. A shout-out to Lock, Stock and Barrels where my family went to eat the other day. They are doing family bubble inside eating. Just be ready to show some proof that you all live in the same household. But if not, they're available for takeout. And businesses, feel free, I'll share this idea from my school's wellness committee, not my idea, but it was a great one. Every Friday now, we are voting on a local restaurant and going to do takeout. And last week, I got to experience vegolution for the first time. And please councillor Reardon, don't be shocked, but, you know, who knew that healthy food could taste so good? So, I'm a convert, but please, folks out there, find a way to support your local businesses. Thanks.
Okay, thanks councillor. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I just have a couple of quick ones myself. I just echo your, oh, sorry, I apologize. Thanks. Councillor Merrithew, go ahead.
Just a quick one, thank you, Mayor Darling. Just so pleased again to hear comments on the radio where there are further uptown development in the old Woolworths building this morning. And just, just so pleased to hear that the momentum carries on through this, through this COVID pandemic. So, just wanted to make a comment on that.
Thank you, well done. Councillor Norton?
Thank you, thank you worship. Just a quick acknowledgement to Adam Wilkins and his partner Leah and the work that they've done with, with the Muskwash Head Lighthouse, which is located in Laurinville. They've, they've incorporated a group out there, Discover Laurinville Inc. And they're doing work along with the Nature Conservancy of Canada to raise funds for that particular lighthouse. They can be found on Facebook and I know that they've also been featured on InfoAMSJ and, and in local media and press, but certainly doing some good work. There's, there's a grant available where folks can provide, provide donations. And I understand that the JT Clerk Family Foundation, which is out of Fredericton, will, will match every dollar if they reach their goal of $12,500 by December 24th. And there's, there's no group that's more generous than St John or so. If, if, if folks around the community can find it to donate to this group, I'm sure that they'll be, they'll, they'll be grateful. And the JT Clerk Family Foundation will help, help match those dollars and continue the workout on the Split Rock Trail, which connects all the way from Black Beach all the way to Laurinville. So, it's quite a, quite a, quite a trail and certainly a treasure right along our coast. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor. I had the pleasure of speaking with Adam, messaging with Adam yesterday when we're back to yellow, looking forward to going out for a tour. And perhaps councillor, you could share on your social media the fundraising links? And then all of us can share, share those out as well. So, it is a very exciting project.
Will do, thank you worship.
Okay, thank you. Did I miss anyone else? Okay, I just a couple then as well, I think just to echo the comments around all we want for Christmas is yellow, the yellow phase. And it really just means us continuing to do as councillor Sullivan said, follow the directives. You know, the physical distancing, the masks, the hand washing. Certainly, yesterday, I want to say thank you again to Dr Russell, to our premier, to the COVID cabinet. They were all up giving their press conference yesterday. And there was certainly some positive hint that perhaps, you know, in a week or so, we could find ourselves in a better spot. But that takes each and every one of us doing our part. And I just urge folks to stay calm. I know we're tired. I know we're, it's difficult because we all want to be together this time of year. So, and as, as someone was mentioning prior to the meeting, I think vaccines are starting to ship. So, hopefully 2021 sees us get to a much, much better spot. The other thing that I just wanted to mention was COVID has interrupted a lot. And one of the most fun mornings that we get to have together is the mayor and council's breakfast for Harbor Lights. And because we don't know where we're going to be, the mayor's office is working on an alternative fundraiser where we're, we'll have the details together in the next couple of days. We'll, we'll launch that out publicly, ask all of you council to support that as well and get that out and try to do a virtual job of raising the same amount of money that we do normally for the Harbor Lights campaign through our breakfast. I certainly will miss us yelling at each other on who's got the eggs going quick enough and who's doing toast. And, but anyway, all kidding aside, it is a really fun morning that I'm going to miss with you all. But we hope we can still raise the money, as councillor Norton said, within this amazing community. So, next couple of days, we'll have the details together and we'll share that out with you and with the public on what we can do there. All right, that's it for members' comments. Next item please, common clerk?
Your worship, next item is under consideration of bylaws and it's item 10.1 on your agenda. And this item is for the business improvement area levy for 2021, as well as the budget. As council will recall, Uptown St John had previously submitted its budget to council. Council then had directed the clerk to advertise the budget. And a time period has elapsed to allow anyone to write in who may have had objections. So, that, that period has now finished. It was originally intended to go to council on November 23rd, but due to the meeting cancellation, it's been moved to this meeting. So, I just wanted to advise council that all of the requirements under legislation have been met. And council may now wish to proceed with approving the budget and then giving two readings to the bylaw, one by the entirety and one by title.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the budget please? Deputy, thank you. And councillor Casey, seconded at that, thank you. On that question, okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone, that motion is carried. Thank you. And then we need a motion for third reading by entirety please? Thank you councillor Casey again. Councillor Reardon, a seconder, thank you. And I'll call that question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay, again, not hearing or seeing anyone, the motion's carried, common clerk?
A law to amend bylaw number BIA two, Business Improvement Levy Bylaw, be it enacted by common council of the city of St John as follows. The Business Improvement Levy Bylaw the city of St John enacted on the third day of January 2006 is amended by repealing section two thereof and inserting the following. A levy of 16 cents for each $100 of assessed value is hereby imposed for 2021 upon non-residential property within the business improvement area established by bylaw number BIA one, Business Improvement Area Bylaw enacted on the fifth day of January 2004.
Great, perfect, thank you. And by title, thank you deputy mayor, seconded by, thank you councillor Merrithew, thank you. And on the question, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Thank you again, not hearing any.
A law to amend bylaw number BIA two, Business Improvement Levy Bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
10.2, your worship, is a bylaw, or bylaw amendments for development fees adjustments. And commissioner Hamilton will introduce this file.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hamilton?
Your worship, members of council, before you this evening are a series of bylaw amendments which support delivery of the city's sustainability plan. It was an initiative approved by council as part of the plan. The recommended amendments are aimed at generating additional revenue by minor adjustments to the city's development fees. And while not full cost recovery, these minor adjustments are intended to bring the city's fees more in line with the cost of delivering services without impacting the viability of development projects. With that introduction, I will hand it over to Ms Amy Poffenroth, Director of Permitting and Development, to present an overview of tonight's staff recommendations.
Thank you, Ms Hamilton. Ms Poffenroth?
Good evening, your worship and council. I'm just going to share my screen. Okay, just confirming that you can see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, good. So, thank you worship and council. We are going to just go over the procedure. So, I'm going to do a presentation regarding all the bylaw amendments that are being considered this evening. There will be five. And then, of course, we'll have time for questions and discussion. And then finally approval of first and second readings if council so chooses in the order that's on your screen. This initiative is part of council's sustainability plan. The revenue target is $100,000 in development fee adjustments. Five of the nine development bylaws will be considered this evening, which is reflective of just under 80% of the total revenue target. The new proposed fees and the reasoning behind them were detailed in reports to council last December and this past February. And at that point, the ideas were put in a hopper with many other ideas and was later adopted as part of the overall sustainability plan. Since that time, bylaw amendments have been drafted and five of the bylaws are ready for council's approval to ensure these new fees are in place by January 1st. We had intended in bringing seven bylaw amendments this evening. However, the zoning and heritage bylaws require public hearings and will be rescheduled for the new year. As part of this initiative, we did some consultation. As required by the applicable acts, the fees were discussed at the Heritage Development Board and the Planning Advisory Committee meetings in October. A letter from the PAC is attached to the package. Both PAC and the Heritage Board were supportive. The PAC actually commented that regular annual increases would be preferred over larger increases over a number of years or after a number of years. We also updated the development or Develop St John Board as well in October. With the exception of the heritage bylaw amendments, no, which there were some letters submitted, which we will look at in the new year, no other feedback or letters were received by the public or stakeholders. There are nine development bylaws that are to be amended to meet the $100,000 revenue target. The five bylaws being considered this evening reflect 78% of the revenue target. The bylaws contribute to the target in varying degrees as shown on this chart. Revenue from these bylaw fees generate approximately $1.2 million annually. Building permit fees make up the majority of development revenues, followed by zoning applications, et cetera. The other four bylaws, zoning and heritage, public streets and peddlers and hawkers bylaws will be considered in the new year. So, just wanted to go over the different factors that we considered when looking at what the proposed fees would be. So, this is the first time that all development permits and fees are adjusted at the same time or in the case of the bylaws that will come in the new year, near the same time. And there's great variation since they were last updated. Some typical permits and approvals, such as building permits and rezoning applications, were last adjusted in 2012. Street excavation permits were last updated in 2010. Others have not been adjusted for quite some time. Pit and quarry permits would be an example. They were last adjusted over 13 years ago. Consumer price index of 1.5% per year was used for fee adjustments. In most cases, the full CPI was applied and in other cases, a rate less than CPI was used, particularly in cases where costing above our comparators was a concern. Cost recovery was a factor for some fees, such as the water and sewer permits. This was adjusted to include a minimal cost for conducting a site inspection, which is not being covered with the current fee. In many cases, cost recovery is not being achieved. For instance, planning applications are highly subsidized. Most are only achieving between 10 and 40% cost recovery. We also looked at a simplified fee structure. So, an example of that would be the variance structure. We reduced the variance fee structure to two levels of fees instead of three levels of fees, which made it complicated for clients to know which fee structure they fit into. So, there's one now for development officer variance and one for the planning advisory committee variance. With respect to new fees, many of the same principles applied, including building consistency where possible among development bylaws. For instance, in the building for the last four years now, we have a double fee charge if work is started before a permit is issued. We will be incorporating that, or that fee, the double fee into development permits. So, some consistency there. This chart shows some sample fees for each bylaw to be considered this evening and the range of increases. Building and plumbing permits is an example of where we're trying to still be competitive and impact our growth initiative as little as possible by not increasing the fees by CPI alone, which would be around 12 to 13% increase. Water and sewer permits and subdivision approvals are examples of where we're trying to get closer to the cost of delivering the service. And as I mentioned, the water and sewer permits have inspections associated with them which weren't accounted for with the previous $100 fee. And finally, an example of a straight CPI adjustment is a street excavation permit. This is a straight, straight 1.5% per year. While development fees are proposed to be increased across the board, with building permit fees generating the largest revenue, the impact on individual projects is relatively minimal and is not expected to impact the decision to proceed with a project. A few examples in the chart demonstrates the impact of the proposed increases on individual projects, showing the building permit fees and the impact on total project costs. Although increasing development fees can be challenging from a messaging point of view, the financial impact on actual projects is relatively low. It is also important to note the high level of support and incentives provided to developers and property owners in the city. The development incentives program and the heritage grant system will remain as a strong driver for projects in the city's urban core. The city also has a number of ways to encourage and support development, including parking exemptions in large parts of our urban areas, promotion and support of higher density developments, access to services and amenities consistent with a vibrant, active neighborhoods and urban standards that citizens come to expect. Additionally, the one-stop development shop provides a high level of customer service to support and encourage development, including the free Project Champion program, free pre-application meeting service. meeting service, a highly skilled, fully integrated professional team to provide guidance to applicants, aggressive turnaround times. St. John actually measures in weeks and Halifax measures in months. We also have a fully functional virtual service to ensure safety and service at a distance. And finally, we have a modernized system of integrated development bylaws. So with respect to next steps, third and if first and second readings of the five bylaw amendments are approved this evening, next week on December 14th will be third and final readings of the five bylaws being considered. I guess we're past November now, but in the month of December, we will be doing communications, staff training, and updating processes and materials so that we're ready to go live January 1st. And then in the new year, we will have the public hearings to amend the zoning and heritage areas bylaws and amendments to the public streets and peddlers and hawkers bylaws, so that they will all become effective, you know, in the winter or the spring. And with that, your worship, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Poffenroth, excellent presentation. I think you did an excellent job of summarizing the suite of tools and the focus, just as you stopped sharing your screen, around enhanced customer service, the One Stop Development Shop, you know, enhanced growth outcomes, our planning tools. So I think you've done an excellent job of summarizing, one breath, just a bit of housekeeping that we're doing here, but all the tools that are in place to enhance the outcomes by enhancing our customer service to not only builders, but residents and developers and everyone else, so well done, thank you. Questions for Ms. Poffenroth? Okay, thank you, Donna, or Counselor Reardon, excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Amy, I'm just wondering, like, when oftentimes people will say, well, I buy a permit, but what am I getting for that permit? So I know you sort of, like, at a high level went over a little bit of that, but could you just remind people, you know, what we're getting for that permit? I know, and I know sometimes people come in with a drawing and pencil, so I know that there's a whole spectrum of what you're receiving at the office, of what due diligence has been done, et cetera. So would you give us just a little, you know, snapshot of sort of like the guidance that you would offer at your department?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thanks, counselor. I guess first and foremost, we ensure that whatever is constructed and built in the city is safe for the occupants, visitors, the general public. So that's our first and primary mandate. But within that, we also ensure that the development meets the community standards through our zoning bylaws and et cetera. But anyway, with respect to support to the client, when they come to get a building permit, you know, even if they come in with a napkin, we hope that they have paper, maybe a ruler, but if they do come in, we provide them personal service to help them get through the application process. We provide a lot of service to large support, so the pre-application meeting service is a service that we offer for larger projects, and the applicants find it very invaluable. They come into us to see us a number of times to work through the details of their proposed projects, so that when they're ready to get started, it's as smooth sailing as it can be. So, I mean, we're providing high level of customer service from a large project, which is complicated and many different aspects and concerns of the applicant, right down to a homeowner who, you know, wants to build a deck, but they don't know how to do it, and we help them at the front counter to make sure that their project gets through. Once the permit's issued, then we have a team of highly skilled inspectors who are onsite discussing with the homeowner, the builder, the contractor, the developer, to make sure that what's actually being built meets the building code and is safe for occupants later on, once the building or the renovation is ready to be occupied.
Thank you. It's, yeah, it's a big service, and I, you know, I often hear very positive comments about the One Stop Development Shop and helping developers, small developers or big developers, get through the process as well. It's always a struggle increasing fees to a certain extent, because I look at an empty lot in the South End worth $5,000 that we pay $168 a year in property taxes. But if we could get like a $500,000 building on it, you know, it would be a real benefit to us, so it's always that, and I think you guys have done an excellent job of seeing what the best practices are and looking at what everyone's doing, because we, and I read in the report that our fees are high, but, you know, I, like I said, it's always a struggle, because I don't want to ever discourage anything in the development process, and I want to make sure that we're supporting developers, because at the end of the day, the year-over-year property taxes are a huge gain for us. So anyways, no, it's a great presentation. I did not read thoroughly read your next 150 pages of all of the documentation of changing the legislation or the bylaws, et cetera, but thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, didn't see any other, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sorry, Deputy, you're muted there.
Sorry, your worship, I was ready to move first reading.
Okay, so just walk us through this, thank you, Deputy, just one moment, we need 10 motions in total, so first and second reading, and we'll just walk through. So first is for the building bylaw, so you'll move first reading, thank you. Do I have a second, or? Thank you, Counselor Reardon, thanks. Okay, on that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone? Thank you.
Your worship, that's a bylaw respecting the construction, repair, and demolition of buildings and structures in the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you, move second reading, please. Thank you again, the deputy, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, thank you. On that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary minded? Again, not seeing or hearing anyone, thank you.
A bylaw respecting the construction, repair, and demolition of buildings and structures in the city of St. John.
Thank you, now for the plumbing bylaw, we need first reading for the plumbing bylaw, thank you again, the deputy, seconded by Counselor Hickey, thank you, sorry, missed you there, Sean, moved and seconded, thank you. On the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor, thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Again, not seeing or hearing anyone?
A bylaw plumbing in the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you, second reading this time, Sean, Counselor Casey wants to move that, I think. Counselor Casey, thank you, Counselor Merrithew seconded that, thank you. And on that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Again, not hearing or seeing anyone, thanks.
A bylaw respecting plumbing in the city of St. John.
Okay, next up, water and sewer bylaw, first reading, please. Thank you, moved by Counselor Casey again, and the Deputy Mayor, sorry, thank you. And on the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Not hearing or seeing anyone, thank you.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewerage.
Thank you, and second reading, I know Counselor Hickey wanted to do that, thank you, and seconded by Counselor Strobridge, thank you, counselor. Feel like we're doing bingo here, okay, thank you. On the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Motion's carried, thank you.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting, sorry, a bylaw to amend the subdivision bylaw of the city of St. John.
Was that not water and sewer, sorry?
Water and sewer, sorry, worship, I'm off track here, yeah, that was second reading of water and sewerage, so that's a bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewerage.
No problem, thank you, and next up is the subdivision bylaw, I need a mover for first reading, please. Thank you, Counselor Casey, and a second, or Counselor McKenzie, thank you. And on the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Again, not seeing or hearing anyone.
A bylaw to amend the subdivision bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you, mover for second reading, please. Deputy Mayor, thank you, Counselor Reardon, thank you. And on the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary minded? Again, not hearing or seeing anyone.
A bylaw to amend the subdivision bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you, and last up, excavation bylaw, mover for first reading, please. Thank you, Counselor Reardon, seconded by Counselor Strobridge, thank you. Again, okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Not seeing anyone, thank you.
A bylaw respecting excavation of streets in the city of St. John.
Okay, thank you, and second, sorry, you threw me off, was that not the second reading for excavation, or did we do that?
That was the first one, your worship.
Okay, so now we're doing second reading. Thank you, okay, thank you, Counselor Reardon, and seconded by the Deputy Mayor, thank you. Okay, and I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Okay, well, thank you very much, motions carried.
A bylaw respecting excavation of streets in the city of St. John.
Okay, well, perfect, thank you, that is a lot, that represents a tremendous amount of work, so to all the staff who have put a lot of time and energy into those, bylaws are very important, they keep our community moving forward, and we thank you all for the great work. Okay, I think a couple people had their hand, I don't see any hands up. Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, I may have gotten you all, so maybe if you just clear your hands, I think you just click the hand again and it takes your hand down, so Counselor Merrithew, McKenzie, and Counselor McKenzie and Counselor Merrithew, thank you. Okay, next item, call my clerk.
Your worship, 12-1 on the agenda is the update from the city manager.
Okay, thank you, city manager.
Your worship, members of council, good evening. The update tonight will be quite short. First of all, on COVID, I recognize and appreciate that a number of counselors have already touched on this subject. We are still in the orange level in terms of the province's emergency response plan, with indications that if we continue to progress well, and the only way we will continue to progress well is if we continue to follow the rules and the guidance, but if we do continue to progress well, then there is a possibility of transitioning back to the yellow phase in the days or week to come. Simply for the information of council, as I reported at the last council meeting, with us being in orange, all of our operating plans have been adjusted for all of our services and our facilities, and I'm happy to continue to announce that all services continue within the city of St. John, with only some minor adjustments being done to the various programs that are delivered within our Parks and Recreation Department because of the additional COVID requirements. But overall, all services continue. For anyone of the public who may have any questions on the orange phase, we would recommend that you direct your questions to the provincial level, and there are methods of contact, both by phone and email, on the provincial website that you can use. If any members of the public have questions about the services offered within the city of St. John, then they can, of course, contact our customer service line, where we will deal with those questions, comments, and observations. Turning to the cyber attack we experienced some weeks ago, we continue our efforts to return all of our IT services. We continue with the approach that we will not rejoin the networks to the public until it is completely safe to do so. Our approach, in terms of determining that it is safe to do so, is very deliberate and exhaustive. Quite frankly, we can afford to take the time that it's going to take to do this properly, since all services, less some online payment services, continue within the city uninterrupted. There are some that are using manual methods to deliver services, such as building permits, but all services are being delivered. Because of that, we should not be, and we are not, in a hurry to rejoin and will take the time that is necessary. Also, with the holiday season approaching and a well-deserved rest required by members who are working on this, and the very precise approach that we are taking, I need to report this evening that we do not anticipate that our IT services, our networks, if you will, will be rejoined to the public until sometime later on in January. My final point for this evening is a bit of a safety message, if I'm permitted the time. We've had two major rain events in the last week or so that have resulted in some, what I would call, traditional flooding within the city, not unexpected, and certainly our work crews were out ensuring that the storm drain basins were cleared, but also closing roads and placing barricades. We unfortunately still have a number of members of our community that are choosing to ignore those barricades and drive on flooded roads. This is an absolute safety hazard, not only for those who wish to drive through flooded areas in terms of their own safety, but also displacing the water causes additional property damage and safety concerns for those who live or businesses that operate on those flood or on or near those flooded roads. And therefore, my plea this evening is a bit of a safety message, is moving forward, we know we will have similar events, and if roads are barricaded, it should not be the threat of a police ticket that causes our members of our community to respect those barricades. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much, city manager, questions, comments for the city manager? Okay, just for me, city manager, a great thanks. I had occasion recently to experience the testing process, to talk to public health, to call the 1-800 numbers, and I will give that number out again, if you have any questions related to COVID, I've given the number out hundreds and hundreds of times, 1-844-462-8387, that's 1-844-462-8387. And I would say that I know folks are tired, it's been very challenging, and just, boy, I'll tell you, a pause and a thank you to those folks answering those phone calls, a smile, a smile to, you know, not only frontline responders, to healthcare workers, but even the individual at the Tim Hortons drive-through. I may not be feeling great hypothetically, it's not their fault, so just, we'll get through this together. Thank you, city manager, for your update, and to, you know, to all of the city employees for the tremendous work that they're doing on behalf of the citizens, so thank you very much. I didn't see a hand or I didn't hear from anyone, so maybe receive and file, please. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and seconded by Counselor Sullivan, thank you. And on the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Not hearing any, thank you, the motion's carried, next item, please.
12.2, your worship, demolition of vacant, dilapidated, and dangerous building at 403 Dufferin Road.
Okay, thank you, and were we going to have a staff report, I've forgotten, Ms. Hamilton? Are you introducing?
Yes, I am, your worship. Your worship, members of council, before you this evening is the recommendation to move forward with the demolition at 403 Dufferin Row on the city's west side. While service levels have been impacted during the pandemic, we are pleased to have the Dangerous and Vacant Buildings Program fully restored, and we are very much continuing momentum on priority files to address both public safety and support growth outcomes. With that introduction, I will turn things over to Mr. Ben Purington, who's the manager responsible for the program, to present an overview of the staff recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton, I'll just share my screen quickly. Good evening, your worship and counselors. The building at 403 Dufferin Row is a one-story convenience store located on the city's west side. The building has become a hazard to the safety of the public by reason of being vacant or unoccupied and by reason of dilapidation. For these reasons, a notice to comply was issued on October 7th. The owner did not comply with the notice within the timeframe provided, and therefore, staff recommendation for the building is demolition. Due to current circumstances, I'm unable to provide interior photos of the building, and the following exterior photos can be found on pages 158 to 163 of the council packet. So here's the front face of the building. The right side. The rear of the building. And the left side of the building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'll just, maybe some questions, but I'll maybe there's a couple of questions before we go to the recommendation. I have my normal statement to read, and I just want to address our online approach versus in-person. So perhaps we'll go to a couple of questions first. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, you can start us off, and then Councilor Riordan. Deputy Mayor?
Well, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say thank you for this because many citizens around that area have been very, you know, very concerned over the last number of months about that building. It had been open to the public at several various times, and young people got in there and people that live around that area were very concerned about fire issues. So thank you to the staff that have put this together because this is a a very popular area, a lot of people around there, and it's a good that we're going to be able to get rid of this building once and for all. So thank you for that because you know, the people are, have been, over the last number of months, most concerned about it. So thank you, Ben, and to everybody else that you've worked on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Or, excuse me, Councilor Riordan. Sorry, thank you, Deputy Councilor Riordan.
Thank you, your worship. Ben, it's owned by a Mr. Fardin Koshi, is it? I think, I thought he lived out in Rossay for some reason, but I didn't, I couldn't find that in the kit. And I'm just wondering if you have if you have the assessed value of that property?
Through your worship to the council, the assessed value is approximately $75,000.
$75,000, oh yes, not worth much there, okay. All right, yes, it's unfortunate to see these places, you know, owned by people who don't live in the municipality, going to rack and ruin. So thanks to the team again for getting that all up and running. I'm sure the ward, the ward councillors are happy about it as well. Get rid of that for sure. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I don't think I, did I miss anyone else in terms of questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So, so again, this has been a focus of this council, your growth committee. I've just done tremendous work here. The staff have done tremendous work, you know, about 80 files a year, half of those being reinvested. We're now at a stage where a number of the buildings on the list are in much better shape, but there still are some files like this. Mr. Purington has done an excellent job of managing through this. And it is, as I've said many times, an indicator of some of the challenges we face, the need for an updated taxation system. And, and, you know, a much more equitable approach between the entire region. So I feel like we're really making huge strides. So the, these buildings and cleaning them up are about local community safety, about quality of life. You can imagine being a neighbor to some of these dilapidated buildings and so, so it might be sticks and bricks, but it really does represent cleaning up the community. So thanks for that. We are in an online meeting tonight. We had no one register to, to raise objections with us, council, so you know, and members of the public. But I will read, despite that, I'll read the demolition statement. The information which has been provided in the council kit includes the report of the building inspector stating that the building located at 403 Dufferin Road, PID 55098040, is a hazard to the safety of the public by virtue of its being, amongst other things, dilapidated or structurally unsound. Is there present an owner, including anyone holding any encumbrance upon this property, who wishes to present evidence to the contrary that the building is structurally sound and not dilapidated? That's what we read in a normal public session, and we did have no one, no one registered tonight, council, with us to raise any objections. So with that, we're ready for the recommendation. Moved by, Councilor McKenzie, seconded by Councilor Norton. Okay, thank you. And on the question, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Not hearing or seeing anyone. Thank you. The motion is carried. And thanks again, Ben, for your great work with, with the rest of the staff. Okay, next item, please, common clerk.
12.3, your worship, is the 2021 Utility Fund Operating Budget, and Commissioner Commissioner of Water will be introducing this, Mr. McGovern.
Okay, thank you. We could, might speak, Mr. McGovern, as you get started. Might speak to 2020 when we're, we're, we can't remember any one of the last names anymore. So Commissioner Water, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, your worship, members of council. I'm gonna share my screen here so that I can bring up this presentation. Sorry, I'll just Are you seeing anything right now?
Not, not yet, Commissioner, no.
Well, here it comes, it looks like.
There you go. No.
No.
Wrong one.
Sorry, your worship.
No problem.
Is that, it's not loading?
Wonder if I can, if I can grab it and share for you?
Yeah, I had sent it to the common clerk earlier as well. The common clerk, are you able to?
Your worship, yes, that's correct. I could, I could share my screen. I have a version of Mr. McGovern's PowerPoint. Okay.
Yeah, let's do, let's do that. And then each time, each time you want to advance a slide, Mr. McGovern, you can just say, drink water.
How does that look, your worship?
We're good. Looks great.
Okay.
Thank you. So good evening. The purpose of this presentation is to present the 2020 Utility Fund Operating Budget, which includes all of the potable water, wastewater and industrial raw water budgets. Before jumping into the presentation, I'd like to highlight that these budgets have been before the Finance Committee. With the 2021 Utility Operating Budget being approved by the Finance Committee on October 21, and the Industrial Raw Water Operating Budget being approved on November 26. And with that, I'll not get into a lot of detail in the slides as these budgets have been presented and are before council for first and second reading this evening. This slide is intended to provide some context around the budget before you. There are some challenges. Revenue has further declined and COVID-19 has had an impact on the metered revenue this year, and we expect that impact will continue into 2021. On a more positive note, there's lots of good news in this utility operating budget. First off, there is no proposed increase for flat rate customers or metered customers. In fact, this budget sets a stage for rate stabilization over the next few years for a number of reasons that I'll cover in some subsequent slides. The 2021 proposed rate remains the same at $1,428 for the third straight year. Debt reduction is also part of the good news. We've been aggressively paying down debt. And by the end of 2021, the debt will have reduced by approximately $26 million. The 2021 capital from operating budget this year is just over $4.8 million. And we are leveraging dollars from other levels of government, which is good considering the infrastructure deficit that we have to address. And this is the first budget to include wage escalation and the, in the local 18 outside workforce. Thank you. The, this also is the first utility budget to include an operating reserve for potable users. The operating reserve allocation this year is $825,000. This is important to strengthen the utility's position so that it's better prepared for the future. Industrial rates are calculated based on a formula that I'll touch on a little later. And the industrial rate setting process, as explained in a one-pager communication document, is attached to this council report and was also added to our website this afternoon. Once our rates are identified, council then sets the rates via bylaw for the four industrial customers. Moving next to, to the next slide, this slide highlights the fact that our flat rate billings have decreased over the years. And yet, despite that, as I mentioned, there's no rate increase. And the good news that you can see or draw from this graph is that the decrease has shown signs of slowing or even flattening. So now we do need to, to get growth going so that we can increase revenue and stabilize rates. Moving to the, to the next slide. On the metered consumption side of the operation, there's no planned increase in metered rates. And similarly, on the metered side of of the water rates, we'll see rate stabilization for all our commercial customers. As you can see in the graph, metered consumption was impacted by COVID-19, and the metered revenue we're projecting for 2021 will be further impacted. And, and revenue further impacted next year primarily for two reasons. Again, COVID, and secondly, the closure of Baxter's Dairies, which in itself will have a 250, or $225,000 impact in revenue to the utility. And moving to the next slide, this budget has no new debt for 2021. Capital from operating has increased. And this is important considering the nearly $300 million infrastructure deficit, and we continue to try and secure funding from other, other levels of government. We've made a number of, of applications. And we're awaiting word on funding. We're also currently working on another application at this time. And, and we continue to make great strides in, in paying down the, the utility's debt. Since borrowing of the funds for the Safe Clean Drinking Water Project in 2017, we've not borrowed any money. And between 2017 and forecasted to the end of 2021, a period of five years, the debt will have reduced by nearly 24% or $26 million. This is excellent progress during the term of council. And moving to the next slide, as you as you can see, we have significantly reduced salaries and benefits by nearly $1 million from last year's budget. This equates to an approximate reduction of 10% of the workforce in one year. We've also been a beneficiary of lower market interest rates, which has resulted in cost decreases of $425,000 when compared to our 2020 budget. We have a number, moving to the next slide, we have a number of initiatives planned for 2021. We're planning to undertake and complete a 10-year financial plan for the utility. We are working on bringing programs in-house, in particular, our unidirectional flushing program. We're securing, working on securing funding from other levels of government, expanding leak detection strategies. And our fire hydrant inspection and painting program will be underway in 2021 with a focus in the Millidgeville and Uptown area where we'll focus on repainting approximately 35% of our 2100 fire hydrant inventory. And moving to the next slide, we're replacing the biofilter at the Eastern Wastewater Treatment Facility. We'll be cleaning and, and inspecting two of our water storage reservoirs and setting up a trailer for our, for our our trenchless repair technology program that will increase the versatility of our fleet and further decrease our fleet by one truck. As well, the asset management program will continue with a further inspection of 65 kilometers of our wastewater system. And moving to the next slide and switching to industrial water rates, full separation of our potable and industrial water supplies was achieved as part of the Safe Clean Drinking Water Project. And next slide, the separation of the system allowed us in 2019 to undertake the raw water rate analysis for east and west industrial water systems. And next slide, for 2020, common council set out the industrial raw water rates via bylaw for each of the four industrial customers. As is also being recommended tonight. And next slide, industrial raw water customers are billed the full cost of providing raw water via bylaw rates set by council. And the industrial raw water bylaw rates include the costs noted below, operational costs, contributions to asset replacement, rate stabilization reserves, and debt as well. And next slide, the rate-setting exercise followed, follows an industry best practice. And the three main components of calculating the industrial water rates include the, for the consumption charge include full recovery of operating costs, fiscal services debt, and contributions to asset management. And the next slide, the 2021 East Industrial Raw Water Costs are noted in this table, as you see here on the screen. East Industrial Raw Water Costs for Shared Assets are divided between Irving Oil and Irving Paper based on the volume of water used in the previous years. And specific costs that relate solely to the specific customer are billed back solely to that customer. The resulting rate, as you'll see at the bottom of the screen, shows a consumption charge for each of the two East Industrial Customers, as well as fixed charges that are noted there. And on the next slide, for the 2021 West Industrial Raw Water Costs that are shown, same exercise was gone through. And in this case, the West Industrial Costs are made, split between Irving Pulp and Paper and NV Power's Colson Cove. And again, those costs are allocated where there's shared assets on a water volumetric basis. And again, the, the rates are noted at the bottom of the screen, including the consumption rate and the fixed charge. And the consumption, the comparison between the 2020 and 2021 rates are shown for the East Industrial Raw Water Customers. And the rate for, moving to the next slide, the rate for Irving Paper increased for 2021, which is the, the larger of the two increases because of additional debt allocated to Irving Paper from the Safe Clean Drinking Water Project. And because of newly, a new fixed bimonthly cost to recover costs if we proceed with the preliminary design of a new connection to that facility. And the comparison between the 2020 and 2021 rates for the West Industrial Customers are shown here on the screen. And the rate, moving to the next slide, the rate for NV Power increased for 2021. Primarily, two, two drivers were the capital work that is required on the 24-inch water main over the next two years, and a reduction in consumption in 2020 by NV Power. And the, these last few slides are, are the conclusion of the presentation. So reflecting back on the early part of the presentation to to stabilize the rates and address the infrastructure deficit. We're tackling the fiscal challenge from all angles. We're holding our lowering costs. We're holding our lowering costs relating to wages and, and reducing staff, as well as savings through continuous improvement projects and optimizing our, our operational costs. We're not borrowing for capital work. We're attacking the infrastructure deficit by focusing on asset replacement as opposed to constructing new assets. And we are seeking to leverage every dollar, both capital and operating, where there are possibilities to get the maximum benefit for rate pairs. And we're also focusing on tendering projects early in 2021. And moving to the next slide, as part of asset management, where it makes sense, we're looking to invest in extending the life of assets with lining projects and trenchless repairs as opposed to replacing assets. We're also focusing on increasing capital from operating as the utility retires debt, which will allow us to address the infrastructure deficit. But we do need to infill vacant lots to generate revenue, as was shown in one of the previous slides, so that we can generate revenue from existing infrastructure without expanding our infrastructure footprint. And we're looking for and actively pursuing revenue opportunities and establishing an operating reserve is also going to help. And so moving to the next slide, in conclusion, this is the first utility budget to include an operating reserve and, and this budget includes an $825,000 contribution to the operating reserve to mitigate the impacts of COVID and any other financial impacts that may arise. And the loss of revenue, while it does have an impact on rates, when you look at the impact of Baxter Dairies equating to approximately 152, or 157 new flat rate accounts that would be needed to replace that loss. When you look at wages, 0% increase for management and local 18, which will be followed by wage escalation in future years. Those are also contributing to stabilization of rates. And staff will continue to identify cost savings and alternative sources of revenue. And, and with that, I'd like to thank those who have contributed greatly to the preparation of this budget, Kendall Mason, Craig Levine, Valerie Farah, and Pierre LeBlanc. And with that, your worship, the recommendation is on the screen before, before you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner McGovern. I've got a question perhaps, I think, for you, Councilor Merrithew. Did you have a question for the commissioner?
Just a comment as well, please, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, just a big thank you to Commissioner McGovern and staff. It's times like this presentation where, and Amy Poprov's presentation before this, where it takes staff 10 or 12 minutes to present the, but it's taken hours upon hours to complete the work that underlines what Amy's crew is doing, what Brent's crew is doing. So just a big thank you. Very impressive budget. We've got declining revenues, but we've managed to keep the, the flat rate the same this year. We've reduced debt again. We've got an operating reserve, first time ever operating reserve. And, and we've got user pay system, of course. And the costs are allocated to the proper end users at the proper price. So again, thank you very much, folks. Do appreciate your hard work.
Okay. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, just one question, deputy, before we go. Just for clarity, common clerk, I just wonder if we can stop sharing the screen. Are we working through first and second reading of the item here, including this recommendation? Or, or is the recommendation caught up in the, the bylaw amendments?
Your worship, I would ask for five motions. One motion to accept the recommendation and then there are two bylaw amendments that each require.
Okay, perfect. Okay. No, I'm clear. Thank you.
Accept the recommendation, please, sir.
Okay, thank you. We'll put it on the floor, moved and seconded by Councilor McKenzie. Sorry, deputy mayor, you had your hand up. Did you have a comment or a question?
Yes, your worship, I just want to say it's a very good report. Thank you to the commissioner. But I also wanted to say to the public, I mean, this is the second year we haven't had to raise water and sewage. Right? So that's, that's good and it's something that we should note because we got clean, safe drinking water. We got all of our sewage issues completed in the city and our rates are remaining the same. And we said a number of years ago that eventually we'd work through to the time when we wouldn't have to raise the water and sewage rates on a regular basis. So I think we're there now and we're in our second year. So hopefully we can have some new growth and bring in some more customers for water and sewage. And we'll be able to keep our rates what they are today or reduce later on.
Thank you, deputy. It's actually the third year, third year in a row that we've held. So, but thank you. Okay. So we have the recommendation on the table. Sorry, Councilor Riordan, did you have a question? You did? Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, worship. Brent, I'm just, I mean, the, the report is great. You know, I don't want to go through what everyone else has already said. I know it's a lot of work and everything. It's fantastic. I just have a couple of quick questions. What's happening to our flat rate customers? Where are they going?
Through your worship, the flat rate customers have been declining, but the decline is stabilizing. And so we are hopeful that, you know, new infill growth, which has been a focus of the city. And, you know, as Ms. Hamilton, Commissioner Hamilton, has reported over the year with the great number of building permits, we're hopeful that we'll start to see that, that trend upward as time goes on here.
So I'm going to say like demolition of buildings or a street being bought up and all the buildings being torn down and being used for something else, I guess, would all get rid of our flat rate customers over time. Now, what about, in the report, it also says that metered customers' consumption is, is reducing? When I look on that graph?
That, yes, that's correct. Consumption has reduced in large part because of COVID and the impact on commercial businesses in 2020. And so we are forecasting an impact to that in 2021, but also a large impact in, in 2021 is the closure of Baxter Dairies.
Okay, I'm just, it would be curious to look at the sales of bottled water, which I don't buy because I don't want water that's been sitting in a plastic bottle in the sun or stored wherever, and I don't know how long it's been there. I don't know what's, it's leached out of there. But they've done an amazing job marketing a product that they probably get from a tap. So it would be interesting for us maybe to look at even, I guess, marketing. I don't know if marketing is the right word, but, but I, I just feel like safe, clean drinking water is, it's what everybody should have anyway, but ours is better than that. It's state-of-the-art drinking water. Like if the Starship Enterprise needed a refill of water, they'd probably come to St. John to get it. So, and they wouldn't call it safe, clean drinking water. They'd call it something far better than that, like the elixir of life to get them up to warp speed or whatever. I don't know, but I just feel like, you know, that the stuff in bottles is getting sold. But the people, if, if, if ours is not, the consumption is being reduced, I don't know why that is happening. So maybe it's just a change of how we perceive it and how we talk about it ourselves. Anyways, that's all I meant to say.
Well, I'll tell you, at the next Star Trek convention, you're going to be talked about. If you can weave in some Star Wars quotes as well, Counselor Riordan, that'd be great. Counselor Strobridge, did you have a comment? You're muted there, counselor.
Yeah, I just had a question. It's really good that we're not raising rates. I think that's excellent. I don't want to see the rates residential increase another nickel. Just high level, Brent, high level without getting into the weeds, more for public education, if anything. What's it going to take for us to start reducing rates and going back the other way?
What it would take is, you know, really addressing the infrastructure deficit. So while we're getting to a better place now, we are supposed to be investing. If you look at the asset management report that was done, state of the infrastructure report, we should be investing around $25 million a year in the utility. We're investing about $5 million in capital from operating with this budget. And we're leveraging, looking to leverage about $5 million. So that's, you know, if, if you say all the funding comes through from other levels of government and we're able to invest a total of $10 million a year, we're still $15 million short of where we should be on a recurring basis. And so after we get to a point where our debt falls off and we retire all the debt of the utility and we're able to use that money to make investments, that will help. And so it's really at this point, until the infrastructure deficit is addressed, it's, it's more about looking to stabilize rates. And if we can address that deficit and get it, get it fully addressed and get onto a sustainable path of, of investments, that's when we can look to, you know, start making changes with respect to decreasing the, the rates.
So we just went through the big Safe Clean Drinking Water Project, right? And we upgraded and replaced underground water transmission lines that some of them were still, what, over 100 years old? So have we gotten them all or are there still more there that still need to be replaced and brought up to modern equipment?
Yeah. Good question through your worship. The, the assets, when we talk about infrastructure deficit, you're correct. You know, significant investments were made in harbor cleanup as well as the Safe Clean Drinking Water Project. Those assets primarily were the construction of new assets to provide services that weren't delivered previously. Safe Clean Drinking Water, collection and treatment of our wastewater, which wasn't done previously. So the infrastructure deficit is really about addressing the linear assets. And so what that is, are the pipes underneath, the older parts of town primarily. And so when you look at, you know, the South Central Peninsula, Lower West Side, Old North End, a lot of those areas still have the original terracotta sewers, cast iron water mains that go back to the late 1800s, early 1900s. So that's where the investments need to be made in order to address that infrastructure deficit and ensure good reliability of service.
Just finally, do we have any idea how many are left of these old pipes that are 100 years old before we're finally going to be caught up? Like how much is left?
Well, there's, there's about 80 kilometers of combined sewers left in the city. And so those would be the old, again, kind of terracotta clay sewers that need to be separated. And, you know, the exercise to do that for all of these streets is, is in the order of hundreds of millions of dollars. So that's where infrastructure money from other levels of government is so critical to address the infrastructure deficit, but also to allow the city to continue to grow and expand in those, in those areas where we need infill activity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, worship. Excellent report, Commissioner. Appreciate it. I'm just curious to Counselor Strobridge's point. Just for clarification for the public, that doesn't mean that we've got hundreds of streets that are going to be torn up and pipe replaced. That means you're going to be going in and lining a lot of those pipes and it's not going to be so visual. Am I right?
We do look at the, the cost benefit analysis of lining, you know, on a case-by-case basis. However, when, when a sewer requires separation, so that means when you have water, wastewater and stormwater going through the same pipe, we need to, we need to separate those. And so that's when we get into the full cost separation of streets and that's why it gets so expensive. But that's more of a long-term strategy and you're right, counselor. The, the interim is more about ensuring reliability and doing what we can to, to line and extend the life of those assets.
Thank you. I'm glad too that, you know, we haven't had to raise rates in three years and I look forward to another three years with no raise in rates. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, just a couple of quick comments. Thank you, Mr. McGovern, Commissioner McGovern, to you and your team. You know, it's, what, I can't remember how exactly Counselor Riordan said it. It's, I've got the elixir of life stuck in my head. You know, we have a water system here, one of the first in the country. We have a water system that is state-of-the-art. We have two excellent sources of water for our East and our West system. And all around us, communities can't say the same thing. And we get compared to those other communities and they can't say the same thing. They don't have the water system. They don't have the state-of-the-art treatment plants. They don't have the well systems. They don't have the infrastructure. So for me, you know, and, and, you know, it's a, it's a personality flaw or a trait. I'm not sure how, depends on how you want to see it. But, you know, you've really armed us, Commissioner, with, you know, there's fact and then there's fiction. And, you know, I try to do a lot of myth busting, where as we said at the finance committee meeting, folks sort of talk like we have this magic wand and we can just charge folks whatever they want. It doesn't work that way. And I want to say thanks to the media who picked up on, you know, the need to better educate people, which you did again tonight, you know, Commissioner. But for me, the answer to Counselor Strobridge and, and, and some other, and Counselor Riordan's comments are growth, 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 and more growth. I mean, we have the density. We have the, the ability to take on more customers. We have water. It's great water. We have the pipes in the ground. Some of them might need to be, you know, perhaps updated down the road. Many other communities all around us can't say that. In a post-COVID world, I believe we have a tremendous opportunity to grow and thrive as a region. We should set the goal to attract 100,000 people to move here over the next 15 or so years. We're lowering debt. We're running, you're running this utility incredibly. You've just worked through the, the largest water infrastructure project in the province's history. Your team finished it on, just slightly or under budget. I guess is celebration, celebration, celebration here, folks. So it's really, you've just made a, a report on water, like you've hit a home run here. And, and, you know, we get that a lot of our citizens would like our water bills to be lower. I agree. So the more council can, the next council can connect the dots to, to, to really focus on growth. And my, I'll get off my soapbox here in just another 10 seconds. We've really had a lot of conversation recently about affordability and the need for more supply. And there is a tremendous number of fully serviced building lots in the city of St. John for sale for $5,000 and $10,000 and $15,000. If you're a developer, folks, St. John, New Brunswick is the place to be. There's demand and there's fully serviced building lots, you know, for $5,000 and $10,000 and $15,000 in the middle of the city. You couldn't dream of that in any other city in North America. So I think we're primed with the work and the focus that this council has, has, has brought forth over the last four years and with the amazing work of our staff. Like the future is very, very bright for us here in the city. Just let's stay focused as we move forward. So all that from a, a water report tonight, Commissioner, but really, really great report. It's, it is, as, as Counselor Riordan said, you know, we can sometimes take it for granted, but there's many communities in North America that wish they were in the position that St. John, New Brunswick is tonight. Okay. So the recommendation is on the floor. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing or hearing anyone, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Now, counsel, we need first reading, sorry, is it a separate item, common clerk? No.
Yes, worship, I would do two bylaw, separate readings, first and second for both.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So need a first, sorry, are you talking? Sorry, I've got myself confused. For both of the items in the 12s, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, just to simplify, worship, yeah. So there's a water and sewage bylaw amendment with schedules A, B, and C. That would get first and second reading. And then water and sewage bylaw amendment, schedule E, would also get first and second.
So I've got it now. Thank you. So for the first item, first reading moved by Counselor Merrithew, seconded by the deputy. Thank you. And on that question, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you very much. And anyone contrary-minded? Again, not hearing any, anyone. Thank you.
Bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Thank you. And second reading for that same item, please. Moved by the deputy, seconded by Counselor Casey. Thank you for that. On that question, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary-minded? Again, not hearing or seeing anyone. Motion is carried.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw. A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Okay, thank you. Now on the water and sewage bylaw amendment, schedule E, we need a first reading, please. Mover of the first reading, thank you, Counselor Casey, again, Counselor Reardon, for a second on that first reading, thank you. On that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Motion is carried.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Thank you, now mover of second reading for that, please. Counselor Hickey, thank you, and Counselor, Counselor Casey, again, thank you. And on that question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing or hearing anyone, the motion is carried.
Bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Okay, perfect, thank you, next item, please.
15-1 is a letter from Retail Council of Canada with respect to single-use plastic bag ban. There's a staff recommendation to refer this letter to the city manager.
Okay, so it's a referral. No, so it's a referral, thank you, Counselor Merrithew, and, and seconded, okay, Counselor Reardon, thank you, so the recommendation, recommendation again was referred to the city manager for his, his review, his action, so on the referral motion, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Thank you, the motion, sorry, are you contrary-minded, Deputy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, one contrary-minded vote, thank you, and next item, common clerk?
The final item, your worship, is 17.1, this is a recommendation from the committee of the whole, it's with respect to Safe Clean Drinking Water Program, accession and termination of agreement. And I can read that into the record if you wish, worship.
Yep.
So this recommendation from Committee of the Whole is that the city enter into a form of project agreement, accession and termination agreement between Brookfield, Inc., Mazu LP, and Port City Water Partners relating to the Safe Drink, Safe Clean Drinking Water Project, and the form is attached to the submitted report, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement.
Okay, thank you, do I have a mover? Thank you, Counselor Reardon, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, okay, thank you. And do you have, sorry, on the question, any comments, questions, okay, okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Okay, not seeing anyone, the motion is carried. Okay, that was a fast-paced night, thank you very much, city manager and staff for tremendous effort on behalf of our citizens, that was a very exciting night, thank you for all the great work. Motion to adjourn, please, Council. Okay, thank you, Counselor Reardon, Counselor Sullivan, thank you, on the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Okay, thank you, that was a squeaker, thank you very much, everyone, thanks for the great night, and be safe.